On a bulletin board filing with the borough clerk. Okay, I guess we can just go right to the case, right? Okay, first case this evening is case number 2303. Michael and Kathleen Mo or Moi, you can correct me.
Mo.
Okay, John, or is the case in order?
Yes, yes, it is. It has been deemed complete by the secretary who has reviewed and we are ready to proceed.
Okay, this is a case on at 20, at 52 Merritt Avenue. And we're going to swear in the applicant who's on the telephone this evening. John, can you do that?
Yes, Kathleen, are you the only one who's going to be testifying?
Uh, yes.
Okay, then if you raise your right hand, do you swear or certify that the testimony you are giving today is the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Kathleen, can you please tell us what you'd like to do in your own words?
Uh, yeah, we wanted to put a one-story addition on the right front side of the home. It's basically 12 foot approximately two inches wide and four feet forward. It would not encroach on the side yard any more than the permanent dwelling that is there now. So it's basically four foot forward on the front.
Okay, and I noticed on the drawing that you have a couple of steps and a landing, I guess, before the front door.
Uh, the porch and the stairs would actually remain that are there. And the new gable roof that would be going over the four foot by 12 foot addition would, would, um, you know, continue and span over the existing porch.
Okay, so it doesn't go any closer to the front yard than existing landing does, right?
Correct.
Right, okay. And are there any walls on this porch? Or is it open?
There are no existing walls on the porch, no.
And in the proposed development, there will be no, no walls?
When you step up onto the existing landing, the proposed addition, four-foot wall would be on your right-hand side because it's going to come out the four feet. And then on the left-hand side of the existing porch, the railing would remain.
Okay. But it's not an enclosed porch?
It is not.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to get that on the record.
Okay.
Anybody else have any questions on this application? Yes.
Questioner, why do you want this extension?
Uh, mainly because the main living area of the home is quite small. And we are going to be doing exterior improvements on the whole house. Right now, our house is, um, shingles, the old shingles. And we're going to be installing brand-new windows inside in the entire home. So it just seems like a opportunity to do an addition now since we're doing exterior improvement.
Okay, thank you. Any other?
Yep.
Any other questions from board members or the professionals? No questions? No, any board members? No? Okay, I'll open this application up to the public for any comments. Anyone in the public wish to make a comment on this application, pro or con? Seeing no one coming forward, we're going to close the public portion of this application. One last chance for comments. Okay, can you tell us what variances?
Thirty feet minimum is required where they're proposing 18 feet. require a side guard setback where a 10-foot side guard setback is required on eight feet.
Okay, thank you. All right, one last.
Yeah, just to clarify, the existing structure right now has an 8.78 side yard. So it's already, I guess, not in compliance. So the side yard would not be decreased from what it is right now. And then the front yard existing is also less than 30 feet. The way the structure was originally built is 22.3 feet existing structure.
Okay, thank you. We see that on the drawing.
Okay.
All right, one last chance for comments. If there are none, can I have a motion for this application?
Motion to approve the application.
We've had a motion to, a motion to approve, and we've had a second.
Okay.
I think John seconded originally. All right, and roll call vote, please.
Mr. Kizemski?
Yes.
Mr. Emma?
Yes.
Mr. Esposito?
Yeah.
Mr. Corrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Castle Grant? Mrs. Gottstein?
Okay, the application has been approved. We will do the memorialization of all the facts and vote on that next meeting. And then you could take that to the building office for your building permit. An excellent presentation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, next case is case number 2305, Levana Bolastir, 60 Jensen Road. Please. Hi, John. And John, is this case up to date?
Yes, it has been declared complete. Secretary has reviewed it. Everything is in order. Swear you in if you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or certify that the testimony you are giving today is the truth?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Could the planner read the variances?
Yes, a front guard setback is required with the proposed retaining wall. A 15-foot minimum is required where one foot is proposed. The PVC fence on top of the wall approaches into the front yard setback. The fences on top of the wall, 15 feet minimum is required, one foot is proposed. The retaining wall and fence between the maximum height allows for the wall fence confirmation. Maximum permitted height is 16, recall is proposed. The addition also requires a front yard setback, 30 feet minimum is required for 23 feet is proposed. The addition also exceeds maximum building lot coverage, 20% maximum is permitted where 21% is proposed. The addition exceeds maximum total lot and previous coverage of 30% max is permitted where 48%.
Okay, thank you. Right, can you tell us what you'd like to do and why you'd like to do it?
Sure. We're, we want to do a two-story addition to, it wouldn't come forward toward the front street at all, but it would, it would go from the right side toward the next street, which is Creamer. Right now, I think we have 35 feet to get to the sidewalk. And we need six feet of that that we're, that we've got the variance for, that we apply for the variance. Um, the two-story is, there'll be two bedrooms and a big living room and laundry room and bedroom on the bottom. Actually, not, not on the bottom. Beds are upstairs and a bath, a half, a bath. The bottom would be a half bath and a living area, like a living room area. And the reason we want to do it is because the house is a nice size. It's four, four bedrooms. But my, one of the bedrooms I use for office, after my husband died, my daughter and her husband, they got married and then they already have two kids. They have a, one that'll be two years old and one that is three months old. So they're using, they need the bedrooms upstairs. So I, me and I wanted an extra bedroom for when family comes.
Okay, very good. So one of the variances because of a block wall and a fence on top of it, is that true? Okay, is that, is that, on which street is that?
To the right of the, the garage. We already have a retaining wall there. But we want to push it back so we have more yard space. So we're going, the, uh, we're making the yard even because we have a slope. So we want to make it even. So we're just, and on the, the side where that's going to be, we already have like, I don't know, 20-foot arborvitae's. So you wouldn't even see the retaining wall. It would just look like a yard, you know, from the front.
And what's the?
Yeah, so we're not coming forward. We're just going to that side.
Well, when you, yeah, and when you're not going forward towards Jensen, right?
Right.
You, you're going towards Creamer, yeah. And, and what, again, what was the, what's the dimension of the, between the, the property line and that wall?
One foot.
Only one foot, and that's existing?
That's in the middle of the arborvitae's. And then there's the sidewalk.
Okay.
They're gonna, the trees are staying. So you wouldn't even see it from Creamer.
Retaining wall is going to be six foot high?
We have one that's three foot now because the yard goes like this. So we need to make it level. We have to go out. So the wall would be six foot. You wouldn't see it behind the arborvitae's. And then it would, the fence will be.
Yeah, I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the street view. So that, that is three feet. All right, so you would have to, all right, I see the slope. Let's, we'll pass the picture around so everyone has a chance to, to look at it.
Mr. Chairman, just a question. Are you going to be able to save the arborvitae's and put the retaining?
Yeah.
Because it doesn't look like there's enough room to keep the arborvitae's in there.
Yeah, we had the, yeah, the engineer and the retaining wall die and everybody is, and the architect, everybody said that it's fine, you know, we had the surveyor and he did all, yeah. I don't want to take them down. I mean, I, I want them there.
I think that would be the concern.
You know.
The concern would be looking at a retaining wall. We're now looking at the arborvitae's, so it'll be behind you.
They've been there for, we moved in 25 years ago, so they've been there forever, so.
Finally asked, how many kitchens are you going to have?
How many what?
Kitchens in the house.
Well, I have my regular kitchen. We're going to have like a little kitchenette area for, for me. So we're, we're looking for the future for when I can't do stairs and stuff like that. Right now, I'm still working and we're also, we left space in the, uh, in the, for the two-story that we're left space to eventually someday even put an elevator if I need it, you know. So we don't plan on moving.
Okay, so this is going to remain a one-family house?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and the kitchenette will not have a stove?
I, we haven't even got, I, you know, there may be a, there's not going to be a big stove. That's what you mean. It's not going to be like a whole-size kitchen. It's going to be like a kitchenette. But the, where it's combining, where the, where it's going to, so where you go from the reception, there's not going to be a wall there. If you're concerned that it's going to look like a two-family.
Right, and there won't be another entrance, like a separate entrance?
There was, you don't have to have a separate entrance. They, they were going to have one on that side to make it level.
Okay, that's all right. That's okay. As long as, as long as it doesn't become a two-family house. Well, we're just concerned about a two-family house. That's, and we ask this question all the time. So it's, it's not just your, your application here.
See, if we don't need, if you don't want the wall there, you know, that's fine. We've already talked about this, whatever adjustments we have to make. We went and did what we wanted. We'll see what we can, what we can get. We just need more space, that's for sure.
And Jay, since this house is on a corner, is there, are there any site?
Mr. Chairman, the proposed retaining wall coaches slightly into the site track. It's a very small portion, but the arborvitae's already do as well. So it's not really changing anything that's there now.
Okay, so it's, existing conditions will remain and not, not get any worse? Okay. Do you have any comments? It's okay if you don't. Any, any members have any comments or concerns? Okay.
That was, thank you.
Just give the planner a couple of minutes, just so we cover all the bases.
So is the room that has the proposed pantry where the new kitchen that is going? Double sinks and washer dryer?
I'm going to have a washer dryer there, yeah, because our washer dryer's in the basement now. I want one on that floor for me.
But this is the kitchenette that you're referring to that has a pantry, this area?
Yep, it's going to be like a storage area.
And do you know how many square feet the dwelling is today? And how many square feet it would be if you bought your wish list?
I'm sorry, my ears are clogged. I'm on the phone. I just came straight from the airport. What did you say?
Wondering whether there's the existing square footage of the house? And what would the total be if you got everything?
I don't know. We never even added it up. I don't even know what I have now.
Well, we know the coverage has gone from 40 to 48. So I guess that's the important thing.
One percent or something is what one of the guys told me.
Yeah, something went from is, is 1% over and another, some, there's another item that's 8% over. I guess total and previous coverage. All right, any other questions from board members or professionals? If not, I'd like to open this case up to the public for any comments, pro or con, on this application. I don't see anybody coming forward, so we're going to close the public portion for this application. There are no other comments. Can I have a motion on this application? Approve or deny? Is there, okay, a motion has been made to approve the application, as is with the second. Roll call vote, please. Yes. Yes. Okay, the application has been approved. We'll, we'll do the resolution, memorializing it next meeting. And then you can, you'll get that in the mail and you can go for your building permit. Okay, all right. Next application is 2306, Ghanip Nee Rash Ramkishna. Sorry about that.
Yes.
John, is this application complete?
Yes, yes, it is.
Okay, the application has been complete. Our attorney will swear you in when he's ready. He's just making notes at this time.
Do you swear or certify that the testimony you are giving today is the truth?
Okay, thank you. This application is for a deck on Four Locks Court, right? Okay, please tell us what you'd like to do and why you, why you'd like to do it.
Currently have a five-by-12 deck without, you know, steps to go into the basement or to the backyard. And the backyard is a little sloppy and it's, gets muddy when it rains and all. So we want to have a, something dry area where we can spend as a family. So I want to extend the, or attach the 12-by-24, 12 deep and 24 along the house to the existing deck. So that we can have a, not the family.
Okay, are the variances, please?
Rear yard setback variance is required for the deck. A 20 feet is required where 14 feet is proposed.
There's only one variance. So, uh, just so I understand it, is your present deck at ground level?
No, it's on the, uh.
It's, it's raised, okay. And so it's going to be at the same level as existing? You're just making it bigger?
Yeah, I mean, us, probably, probably that's at one level and we have two steps down.
Okay.
So that it's easy for states to go.
Okay. Is there going to be a roof over this deck? Just railings? Okay. And it'll be finished more or less to conform with the house? With the, the way it's built and the aesthetics and the color?
Right.
Okay. Any other members or professionals have any questions on this application?
What is behind your house?
Another house, so between two streets, you have a house facing the street and the house behind us, in the face of the other street. Two courts, I would say.
So your backyard to backyard?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, make sure I don't bend into the, the house, especially to the side of our house, so that they have privacy as well.
Right, any other questions of the applicant or comments? All right, open, I'll open it up to the public. Anyone wish to make a comment on this application, please come forward. No one wants to make a comment, so we're going to close that portion. Any other final questions before we vote? If not, can I have a motion on this application, pro or con? Motion has been made to approve and seconded by Mr. Emma and Mr. Esposito.
Yes, I was going to say you should announce who is the, just for the record.
Okay. All right, roll call vote. Yes. Yes. Your application has been approved. We're going to memorialize it next meeting. And then we'll send that to you and then you can go get your building permit. All right. Okay, our last application this evening is Joe Gerold. Case number 2309, 96 North Edward Street. Bulk variance addition.
Chairman, the application has been deemed complete.
Okay. You're representing?
Yes.
Okay, please state your name.
Robert Downey, 302 Jersey Mill Road, terrible.
And you're representing Gerolds, okay.
Can you raise your right hand? Do you swear or certify that the testimony you are giving today is the truth?
I do.
Have the variances, please.
Variance for lot coverage is required, I'm sorry, for building coverage is required. 20% max is permitted, 27% is a proposed. Variance for lot coverage, 40% maximum is permitted where 43% is proposed. Variance for side yard setback, 10% minimum is required where five feet, 10 feet is required where five feet is proposed. The combined yard setback requires a variance, 25-foot minimum is required where 15 feet is proposed.
Okay, tell us.
The, the, the house built in 1988 and when they had it built, they, they maximized the area that was available. And the current code still exists. So that's what triggered, uh, basically anything would trigger those variances. What they're looking to do is do this addition for themselves. They're looking to move into this new area and they're going to give their daughter and his husband and her husband and the soon-to-be child the existing house. So they wanted to stay in town. Everyone knows what the housing conditions are like about finding things. So this was the best course of action for them to take. The, uh, the addition consists basically of a garage, two bedrooms, a bathroom, and a common, a little living area for themselves. They're going to use the existing, share the existing kitchen.
Okay. So this is, this is the drawing?
Yeah, the survey, or you can go on the bigger sheets, which I know is a little harder. T1 shows everything on there. Approaching, it's on the left-hand side of the house, which the, the property next door is actually the right-of-way for Jersey Central. The towers there on North Edward Street.
Garage is on that side?
Garage is on that side. We're not approaching any neighbors. You have like a couple hundred feet before it hits the next neighbor.
Okay, and is, are the, is the addition one story, two stories?
One story. It's, it's now, right now, it's a ranch. It's going to stay ranch.
Okay. Just a one-family?
One-family, correct. If you look at design, I think if we go to A1, that gives you a basic idea of what we're looking to expect. So the existing garage will be converted to, say, the living area, the bathroom area. And the actual extension really consists of the two bedrooms and the garage. So that side entrance to get in will may, you know, remain.
Okay, and you just, I guess you're going to somehow have to develop the roof to match the existing roof or?
Yeah, everything's similar, like it was built, like this was built originally.
Okay, including the siding, siding will match? Okay, the shingles on the roof. We asked this of everybody. Yes, right. Okay, yeah. Members or professionals, any questions?
What is behind the house?
It's going to be the back door. The house is on plus, yeah. But there's some buffering in there now. There's pine trees and that. They're not really, really close to the, uh, you know, back door. There is not, there's no retaining wall. It, it is, there is a slope, but it's not, it's not like a big retaining wall. There's trees, there are pine trees in that back there.
I guess just the one thing that I'm not 100% clear on, there's an existing garage?
There's an existing garage, right? It entered from the side of the house.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, so it's on face. Now the garage would be actually facing the street where it's now, it's kind of, you know, on the side of the house.
So you're swapping garage for living space and living space for, okay. Right, okay. Right, any issues with water? Where's the water going to go?
No, we're actually, we're actually quite high. The actual extension, you have a nice natural flow of water, so that's not going to change.
And the addition to the back property?
That's correct.
Any other questions from board members, professionals? Okay, I'll open this to the public for any comments on this application. If you have any comments, please come forward. Seeing no one coming forward, we'll close the public portion on this application. One last chance for questions or comments. If not, can I have a resolution, pro or con on this? Approve, Mr. Corrigan says approve. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Emma to approve. Roll call vote, please. Yes.
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 Okay, your application is approved. We'll memorialize it next and you'll get the building permit. Okay, all right, thank you. Yeah, okay, and it's, that's, that's probably it, right? But first, we're going to open it to the public. I don't know what they're here for. Okay, now we're going to open it to the public for just general comments concerning the Board of Adjustment. Anyone has any comments in general, please come forward, seeing no one coming forward, the public portion is closed, oh, okay.
Hi, my name's Corey Penland.
Now you don't?
By me and I Liberty Street, I don't have to do all that?
Yeah.
All right, so I don't know if zoning has anything to do with driving or not in town?
What do you mean by driving?
So, all the eighteen-wheelers now in town, so this has happened to me five times. You're at the light and the tractor trailer can't get around and you're at the right line. Right, so nobody behind you can back up, so you have to wait like three lights. I'm exaggerating, just say two lights, you know what I mean, in order to go. So before this warehouse opens, I'm just wondering if you put into, you know what I mean, notification of all areas in town?
Okay, well, I'll answer the question.
All right, so this has something to do with zoning?
Right, well, it, we didn't do that development there, that was the planning board, or Sarah, was it planning board or Sarah? Planning, so it was planning board, so there's, there's two boards in town, one is the zoning board and one is the planning board. So that was, the, the bigger, yeah, the bigger projects are usually the planning board.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you're at the wrong meeting.
When did they meet, Joe?
But. All right.
Shouldn't you guys?
But are, the engineer on both boards is here, right, Jay, so he can answer your question.
Let me just clarify, your question was about the intersection of Boardentown and Cheesecake?
Oh, it's actually, it's actually in a couple places, so it's actually where the high school is. By Shop, right? Yeah, by Shop, right, and Ernston, Ernston, when they're going to turn, I've been stopped there a million times and they're like honking their horns, waiting, so we just wait because you can't make everyone behind you back up, but by law, they're at the right line. So what I'm saying is, when that goes into, you know what I mean, when all the trucks are coming through town, you need to move that line further back so people know these eighteen-wheelers can make that turn.
Can, let me, the warehouses you're referring to are on Cheesecake Road, is that?
Even right now, it's happening all the time.
Yeah, well, Ernston and Washington are county roads, right, that, they're both county roads under the county jurisdiction, so any modifications that an intersection would have to be done by the county. The Traffic Safety Division of the Police Department typically would get involved if there's an issue possibly with relocating, striping or different things.
My boyfriend's uncle's house got hit by a drunk driver. Hole in the wall, I called the county, I called Sarvo, thinking that we could do something about the intersection by where Richie's Getty used to be, everyone knows Richie's Getty. MacArthur and Main Street? And they said, no, you have to call the county, so I called the county and they go, somebody has to die to be there. So we actually had an accident there where the guy's actually like paralyzed on his arm. Like, so we're trying to call the county on certain things and they do nothing.
With county road, county jurisdiction, the, the issue could be, if you, if you contact the Traffic Safety Division of the Police Department, Sergeant Braille, if there's accidents, he would have information on that, he would go, okay.
All right, so the same thing, so Washington Road is a county road?
Washington and Ernston are both county, Main Street, McCarth, MacArthur's not, but Main Street is.
Main Street is, MacArthur's not.
Correct.
So. We, having been to the council meeting?
Where?
Mayor and council meeting, Mayor and council, here.
Here?
Yes, we're the mayor and?
I, I don't think this issue has come to the mayor and council.
Then I think that that would be the place to do so.
I just noticed when I, I almost witnessed car accidents happening, you know, like, and I'm sitting there and I'm like, oh my God, it's not my car, but I'm like, oh, there could be hit that car, so, you know what I mean, like, because people think they can just back up and they're not thinking cars behind them, of cars behind them, so the eighteen-wheeler can turn around, do you understand what I'm saying?
Yes. So.
Like in an accident in slow motion.
Oh my gosh, I'm like, no, 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 this isn't happening.
By bringing it to the governing bodies' attention, they can then have the public safety, the police and traffic look into it and they can then report back and then go to the county and say, county, these are your roads, here are the problems, here's a possible solution to them, and it would be good if you could point out specifically which intersections, not just all these intersections.
Okay, I'll try again.
Come to the governing body and. Jay, when, when is, when is the meeting? Next Monday.
This Monday.
But if it has nothing to do with you guys and it's county roads?
Well, no, but I think the, several governing body could put more pressure on the county than a citizen probably can because they're, they're representatives of this, all the citizens, so if you let them know and.
Just saying, like, I'm going to get bolder and put him in front of his uncle's house and you guys are going to complain about something. You understand what I'm saying, like, how many times has your house been hit, his house been hit, five times?
Where, where, where is this house? What?
Right across on Main Street.
Major.
If you're, if you're going down MacArthur and you keep going all the way straight, you run right into his house, which everyone does. So, I'm just saying, all right, now I got it.
Are we, we couldn't help, we tried?
It's okay, all right, thank you.
Okay. Yeah, sooner or later, the right, you'll hit the right person, so keep, keep trying, okay?
This actually made me sick to my stomach, you know what the cops told me? It's going to take somebody to die to get that change, and that's what made my, my stomach sick.
Tell that to the council people.
Oh, I, oh, I told it to the county, I, okay, all right, thank you.
Monday night. Anybody else have any comments? Seeing no one else coming forward, I'll close the public portion, and can we have a a motion to approve the December meeting minutes? Is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded to approve the meeting minutes, all those in favor?
Ah, yeah.
Anybody object, the minutes are approved?
By the people who are here.
Yeah. And, okay. Anything else, anybody wants to bring forward before we adjourn? If not, can I have a motion to adjourn? Yes, motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor to adjourn? All right, we're adjourned, thank you, everyone. Thank you, nice meeting you.